Now, we're having arrived in a quorum being present. I'll call the special town meeting to order. The very first thing I'm going to do is to make sure that everybody can hear us. Please hold your vote ticket out the window of your car if you can hear us now. All right, I see quite a few tickets. Please check the cars around you. If there's somebody in the car and they're not holding the vote ticket out the window, it's possible that they can't hear us. All right, if there is anybody that is unable to hear us, please beep now or forever hold your peace. Now we got one, it sounds like. All right, if you're beeping and you're unable to hear us, make sure that your radio is set to 107.7 FM. Of course, if you can't hear us, you can't hear me saying that. You may need to move closer to the middle of the parking lot. We do know that the further out you get to the sides, the weaker the signal becomes. What we'll do is we'll read the warning and the return of the warrant while people are getting themselves rearranged because that's not a voting matter, and then we'll move on from there. Yeah, it is windier than it was in... No, I know that. I'm trying to figure out if I can do it with the binder. I hope not. All right, right now, we are trying to make some adjustments for the wind. All right, so once again, we'll check and see if everybody's able to hear us. Please hold your vote ticket up. Those folks that were having trouble before, hopefully, are not having as much trouble now. All right, I do see quite a few again. Okay, folks, once again, we're going to move forward with the reading, the warning, and the return, and we'll just see how we go from there.
To either of the constables in the town of Freetown greeting, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown who are qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at a Ponequit Regional High School, 100 Holland Road, Lakeville, Mass. on Saturday, the third day of October 2020, at 1:00 p.m. there, and to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posted attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asona Post Office, the East Freetown Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, the Freetown Town Hall, the Freetown Communications Center, and Freetown Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts, given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown this fourteenth day of September, Anno Domini 2020, signed by the Freetown Board of Selectmen. To the town clerk, town of Freetown, Mass., September 16th, 2020, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places herein, signed Stephen E. Abbott, Constable.
Okay, folks, normally, we take every article in order. However, we do know that most of you are here for two particular articles. I inform you at this time that the Board of Selectmen met approximately a half hour ago and voted to withdraw these articles. The selectmen will now explain to you their reasoning for doing so.
The town clerk article, I'll address first. Jackie Brown, our town clerk. The town clerk article. Jackie Brown, our town clerk, will be retiring in December. Currently, Cheryl Estrella serves as the assistant town clerk. Upon Jackie's retirement, the board will vote on the appointment of Cheryl Estrella to town clerk in December. This article was to solidify that vote. It was merely a way to protect Cheryl as a town clerk moving forward. The reason for the appointment of the highway surveyor was a first step towards making a public works department whereby streamlining several departments into one in anticipation of cost-saving measures and efficiency. There would be no reason to move towards a public works department if the town were not in favor of an appointed highway surveyor. Let me begin by saying this: this effort was in no way an attempt to strip anyone of their right to vote on these positions. This was an attempt to bring forward thinking resolutions to age-old scenarios. The problem is that there was so much misinformation, lies, which had been spewed at coffee shops and behind computer screens on social media, a way to create chaos and controversy, assuming rather than questioning. We are here to present and protect you. Articles which all have been vetted. Our goal is to always protect the taxpayers at all time. Not everything is a conspiracy. Sometimes, it's just plain truth. I myself realize that this pandemic has brought about many challenges. Just look at us now, 1 o'clock on a Saturday, sitting on your car, listening to the town meeting on a radio. We should really be voting on articles out of necessity. Although these articles are worthy, we cannot communicate the way we have in the past when faced with difficult decisions. We will continue to review these articles and bring them forward at a time where we can all participate appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, those articles having been withdrawn, that means that they will not be voted on today. They have been withdrawn, they have been removed from consideration. I want to assure everybody that those articles will not come up any further today. When we get to that point in the warrant, they will not come up, they will be passed over. Of course, this is a town meeting, we do have other things to vote on. Everybody is welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting. That's why you're voters, that's what you've checked in for. But just because it is a nice day, I'm just going to let everybody know at the outset, those articles will not be voted on today. So with that, we will move on to the beginning of the special town meeting. You have a handout that asks for proposed considerations. Says the moderator recommends the following motions be considered and adopted at the outset of the meeting. Motion 1: to waive the reading of all articles and instead refer to them by number and title. This motion requires a majority vote. I would ask now if anybody is willing to make that motion. All right, I have a motion and a second to do so. What this means, folks, in your warrant, you see the article number and then it has a title. Just for example, Article... Of course, I flipped to the wrong page. Article 1: Correction of Town Clerk's Salary and Compensation. This motion, instead of reading the entire article word for word, we would simply call it by number. That's the motion that's been moved and seconded. Does anybody care to discuss specifically that motion to waive the reading of all the articles? I should tell you, I'm sorry, I should... If you do choose to have a discussion, if you do choose to discuss, if you have any questions to ask, the microphone is up here by the driveway by the flagpole. You would just come to the microphone, state your name and what part of town that you live in, and then you would be able to discuss from there. So at this time, we would have discussion on simply not reading all of the articles word for word. Do we have anybody to discuss that? This gentleman in the front is coming to discuss.
Good afternoon. My name's Adolphus Neck, West 32 County Road, and he's Freetown. I'm wondering why we're gathered here where you're not going to read the articles. I request that you read them. We're here for a meeting.
That's what we're... That's what we're voting on now, is whether or not to read them or not to read them. That's what we're doing, that's why we're taking this motion.
I have a motion to read the articles.
Well, we vote on the motion not to read them. If that fails, then we read them. Is there any further discussion on whether or not to read the articles? Okay, hearing none. If you are in favor of not reading the articles, please hold out your vote ticket, and the counters will now please go about and count the yes votes. Okay, and now, all those opposed to not reading the articles, please hold up your ticket at this time. The counters will again come around and count. Jen was zero. I get 0, 2, 3, and 2. Okay, the yeses were 76, the noes were 7. So as we progress through the meeting, we will take each article by number and title. This again will not stop anybody from discussing the articles, it will just cut down on the amount of reading. The second motion to consider before starting the meeting is to consider Article 12 only after all other articles have been considered. That also requires a majority vote, and there is an explanation on the same handout as to why that is being requested. Is there a motion to do that? Okay, I have a motion and a second to consider Article 12 only after all other articles have been considered. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, there does not appear to be, so we'll now take a vote on this motion. If you are in favor of this motion, please hold your vote ticket out the window. Depending on how low the car is, you can't see between the second or third row sometimes. Oh, the wind, yeah. Okay, and now, those opposed to taking Article 12 last, please raise your ticket now.
Yeah. Let's just do that way, raise one more time. And then we're going to... Oh, you did the whole part right. It was the whole side.
No, I... I put this face first, and all my stuff I used to say. Oh, yeah, I thought about that. Okay, thank you. The yeses were 48, and the noes were 3. So Article 12 will be the last article that we discuss today. We'll now move on to taking the articles in order. So I'll just give you the same normal reminders we do every time. Well, I don't have to ask you to silence the cell phone because you're in your car. No one should speak until recognized by the moderator. And again, if you'd like to come up and speak today, the microphone is on the concrete right over here by the flagpole. If you can see the flagpole, you'll find the microphone. Anyone coming to the microphone to speak should give your name and residence before speaking for the first time. You should also have your pink vote ticket so that we can identify you as a voter because we're outside, we've got to make sure that it's just Freetown residents. And if you were here at our meeting in August, we did have a bicycle armada and a lady walking a dog come through in the middle, that was pretty fun. And all articles today will be funded from taxation unless otherwise specified. So with that, we will move on. Again, we'll just... We'll read the article number and the title, and other than reading the articles word for word, we'll go on as we normally do. So Article 1 is the correction of the town clerk's salary and compensation. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 1. Is there any discussion on Article 1? I'd just like to remind folks too, so the first few motions we've had have come from the front. If you have a strong opinion and want to make a motion on a particular article, you're free to come up to the microphone before we get to that article, perhaps at the end of the article preceding it, so that you'd have your opportunity. Article 1 has been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any discussion on Article 1? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, please hold out your vote tickets. Okay, now, all those who are opposed to Article 1, please hold out your ticket. Okay, the yeses were 69, and the noes were 4. So Article 1 is adopted. It was pointed out to me a minute ago that another way that we could do this, and we will try it on the next article perhaps, is that if we take the no votes first, and there are less than half of what we know is here, then we would know the majority has adopted. That would work for the articles that are majority votes, not necessarily the ones that are 2/3 or 9/10. So we will try that moving forward. Article 2 is the supplemental fiscal year 2021 budget. The budget should have been a separate handout for you as you came in. What I will do, I will treat this one like we do the normal budget. I will read down the list of departments. If you would like to discuss one of them, try just beeping so that we know you want to put a hold on it, and we can come back to it afterward. We have moderator, board of selectmen, board of assessors, assessors' revaluation, town clerk, conservation commission, public buildings and property maintenance, police department, communications center, fire department, building department, animal control officer, highway department, transfer station, cemetery commission, council on aging, libraries, unemployment, capital purchase for fire or EMS equipment. There were no holds, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to adopt Article 2 as recommended by the finance committee. I add the motion and the second. Does anybody wish to discuss Article 2? You'll have to forgive me, I keep trying to pick my mask up and keep sliding down. Oh, Lucille was coming up, all right.
I just don't understand...
Well, Lucille?
Oh, Lucille Rosa, 9 West Cudworth Avenue, Asona. I just don't understand this budget handout. It doesn't seem to have the complete budget.
So, Lucille, this is... These are budgets that were reduced in the spring that are now going back to what they originally requested, or close to what they originally requested.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is supplemental funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other discussions or question on Article 2? Seeing none, again, what we're going to try doing is taking the noes first and seeing if they are less than half, and then we would know it's passing by the majority. So if you are opposed to Article 2, please hold up your ticket, and the counters will go around and check. No, 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 that's a good... So it's just pointed out to me, after we count the noes, we will have to do a visual on the yes, but if it's obvious, then we won't have to count all of them. And for the yeses now, please just hold out the ticket. Again, we won't need to count them if we're... Okay, being that there was only one no vote, and there are a number... Okay, being that there was only one no vote and there are a number of yes votes, I declare Article 2 has been adopted by the majority in the recommended amounts. Article 3, Expenses for Elections and Salaries for Election Workers. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 3? Is there any discussion on Article 3? Seeing none, uh, again, all those who are opposed to Article 3, please hold up your ticket. Okay, and those who are in favor, do you just hold your tickets out? Okay, there were no, no votes and there are a number of yes votes, so Article 3 is adopted by the majority. Article 4, Additional Salary for the Assistant Town Clerk for Additional Town Meetings and Election Regulations. Motion is made and seconded to approve Article 4? Is there any discussion or questions on Article 4? Seeing none, all those who are opposed to Article 4? If you are opposed to Article 4, please hold up your ticket. Okay, and all those who are in favor of Article 4, please hold out your tickets. Alright, there having been one no vote and more than one yes vote, Article 4 is adopted by the majority. Article 5, Additional Salary for Board of Registars for Additional Town Meetings and Election Regulations. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 5 as read? Is there any discussion on Article 5? Seeing none, all those who are opposed to Article 5, please hold out your ticket. Okay, all those who are in favor of Article 5, please hold out your ticket. Okay, there having been one no vote and more than one yes vote, I declare Article 5 has been adopted by the majority. Article 6, Reducing the Bond Anticipation Note. And I note to you, although I gotta flip back to my other, uh... Oh, I got it, thank you though. Uh, this article is recommended by transferring $1,659,000. Well, from Free Cash, I'm sorry. That's specifically from Free Cash. So I have a motion to approve that as, uh, as recommended with their second? There is a second. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve that in the amount of $1,659,000 transferred from Free Cash. Uh, Lucille is at the ready. Go ahead, Lucille. Is that, I can't hear. Is that on? Lucille, now come on over here, use this one. Right. Or if you speak loudly to me, I'll repeat it. However you want to do it. Oh, hold on. Lucille has asked, she says the article is written as $5 million. Is the article wrong? And, uh, the selectmen are now going to respond. Take that one down there. We'll give it a shot.
We're going to be reducing that by $1,659,000. So at the end of this, it will be, we'll be bonding for $4 million for the police station.
And, uh, could you also explain what the ban is? What is a, um... Oh, it explains it here somewhere, but I don't understand bond anticipation note. What is that?
So... So we're, the ban is for short-term borrowing, but when we're done with short-term borrowing, we're going to go to bond. And the bond will be for over ten years in the amount of $4 million.
Okay, we're going to try it like this. So, uh, that is Article 6 that we are on now. Is there any further discussion or questions on Article 6? Seeing none, uh, all those who are opposed to Article 6, please hold your vote ticket out. Okay, all those who are in favor of Article 6? Alright, there having been one no vote and more than one yes vote, Article 6 has been adopted by the majority. Article 7, to increase, uh, excuse me, an increase to the operating budget for the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. Motion is made and seconded to approve Article 7? Are there any questions or is there any discussion on Article 7? Uh, somebody's coming. Somebody's on the move. A couple of people are on the move.
Hi, my name is Joanne Godd and I'm from, um, on Dean Street in Asona. I'm just curious what the Water Sewer Commission actually is? Who gets water? Who gets sewer? And why does the town have to pay all this money for it?
Is there, are there any members of the Water and Sewer Commission here? Give it a second to see if there are any here. There are not. Would anybody up at the table like to take that question?
So there is, um, water on both the Asona side and the Freetown side. That's number one. There are a, a Board of Commissioners that oversee that. And this money is actually not taken out of the general fund or taxation. This is actually coming from the people that actually use the water.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, yes? Uh, Tina Sorrell from 14 Gerard Avenue, East Freetown. And thank you very much for clarifying that. I just paid $13,000 for my well and I was not wanting to be paying more money toward, um, this. So thank you very much for clarifying.
Okay, are there any other questions or further discussion on Article 7?
Lucille Rosa, Nine West Cudworth Avenue, Asona. So if I'm understanding correctly, if we approve this article, the people who get the services are going to have an increase in what they pay. Is that accurate?
I will, I'm hearing no from the table. Kim, is that something you could answer? Okay, Kim is our town accountant.
Folks will not necessarily have an increase to water or sewer. Um, the commission has not voted any increase in rates. Um, what we have found out is, uh, new meters from the City of Fall River have been put in place. Um, and now we're getting more accurate reads. So the consumption, uh, is more accurate. So therefore the bills that we will be paying out have been significantly higher. So folks will not pay more in their rate, but they may have, um, a difference in their consumption.
So that's, that's expected to take care of this?
Yes, because whatever they utilize, they pay for. So this is, um, you know, it's not a rate increase. It's just, um, the fact that meter, new meters have been installed, um, at the, at the main site where the water comes out of. Um, and that has resulted in higher, uh, bills for the, for the Water and Sewer Commission to pay. So we need to increase the amount of the appropriation so that they can pay those bills.
Alright, so again, for clarification, where is this money going to come from?
From, from the water and sewer users as part of the bills that they pay based on their actual consumption.
Okay, so my original, from what I'm understanding, my original question is accurate, that the money is going to come from the people who use it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? Alright.
Eight Office Neckwitz, 32 County Road. I have poor water pressure. I get fed from the dead pit. I'm wondering if the commission could do anything about that?
So again, um, is there anybody here from the Water and Sewer Commission? Because unfortunately, they would be the only ones who could answer that question. It's their department.
Okay, another question?
Certainly.
Why are we paying for a commission that is not here to answer answers? Uh, questions?
I'm sorry? Uh, the commissioners themselves are not paid. They're volunteers.
Oh, in that hand? I'm sorry.
Nope, it, it's a fair question. It's a fair question to ask. But they are volunteers. They, the three of them are not paid. Are there any further discussion or questions on Article 7? Okay, seeing and hearing, oh, wait, no, Lucille's on the move again. She's rounding second. She's heading for third.
Lucille Rosa, Nine West Cudworth Avenue. Um, so if this article gets turned down, where will the money come from then?
Kim does not have an answer for that question.
Okay.
Any additional questions or discussion on Article 7? Okay, seeing and hearing none, if you are opposed to Article 7, please hold out your ticket. Okay, those who are in favor of Article 7, please hold out your tickets. I'm going to just look. I see, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So I see over twenty who are yes. The total of noes was eight. So I can declare that Article 7 has been adopted by the majority. Eight no and more than twenty yes. Article 8, uh, this is a note. I just have to give you a correction. Articles 8 and 9, both say they require a majority vote. They in fact require a nine-tenth vote or a ninety percent vote. Article 8 is an authorization to pay a prior year water bill from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 8? Are there any questions or is there any discussion on Article 8? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Oh, there is. I'm sorry. I could not see you over the car.
It's the same fund as...
See, you just, you just have to...
Tina Sorrell, 14 Gerard Avenue.
Thank you.
This is the same fund as the prior that you were talking about.
This is, uh, what Kim has told me, this is retained earnings rather than current year revenue. So just to clarify, this is money that they already have. They just need permission to spend it. That's correct. This is money that the Water Department already has. They just need permission to, to pay the bill. Are there any further questions or any additional discussion? Okay, I do not see any, so I will ask for all those who are opposed to Article 8 to please raise your ticket. Okay, this is an easy threshold. Nobody voted no, so if even one person voted yes, this works. And I see one yes, so Article 8 has been adopted. Uh, we will call that unanimously since there were no noes. Article 9, Authorization to Pay Prior Year Sewer Bill from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 9. And I would wager to guess this is the same thing, but this is a sewer bill in... and I would wager to guess this is the same thing, but this is a sewer bill instead of a water bill. Correct. So this is money they already have. They just need permission to spend it. All those who are opposed to Article 9. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on Article 9? I should have asked that first. Okay, seeing none. Now all those who are opposed to Article 9, please vote. And all those who are in favor of Article 9. Okay, once again, there having been no no votes, and there are a number of yes votes, we'll declare Article 9 has been adopted unanimously. Article 10, a transfer of funds to the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 10. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion on Article 10?
Tina Sorrell, 14 Gerard Avenue. Can you just explain what that $50,000, it seems very high for cable access. Can you just explain that, please?
Certainly.
Yes, these funds have been collected as receipts over a period of years, and have been sitting there, and they need to be transferred. It's, it's not additional money that's being raised. The funds are going to be used to equip the new community use room at the new police station. We're going to install a camera system so that we can broadcast meetings, and we're also going to put a, like a studio operation there also. It's not so much a studio, but a, a room where we can have a server and be able to communicate the cable broadcast out of the police station.
Okay, are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 10? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All those who are opposed to Article 10, please hold up your ticket. Okay, all those who are in favor of Article 10, please hold out your ticket. Okay, there were four nos. I see more than a dozen yeses, so Article 10 has been adopted by the majority. Article 11, rescission of 2,000 vote regarding part-time conservation agent. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 11. Are there any questions or discussion on Article 11? Okay, we do have somebody coming.
Can you please explain to me, Adolfus Neckwitz, 32 County Road, explain to me what, what the article is about? I don't understand it.
Is there anybody specifically from the Conservation Commission here before we try this up here? Okay, no. Alright, so we'll have, for the absence of a Conservation Commission member, our town attorney will, will answer the question. No, I don't think yours is. You might have to take this one.
Thank you. Tim Zesson, Town Council. There, there's presently a, a general law, Chapter 40, Section 8, in place that already allows the Conservation Commission to appoint an employee in this position. A few years back, it, it appears that the bylaw was amended to give this authority to the Board of Selectmen. That bylaw was since reviewed, and it was determined that the bylaw is in conflict with the general law, and that's why we're, we're asking voters to rescind that, that bylaw that was passed a few years back.
In other words, the people of, mass, uh, people of the town are going to have a say in who the commissioner is?
That, uh, that's not actually what's being voted on here. What's being voted on is who the appointing authority will be. It will continue to be the Conservation Commission and not the Board of Selectmen.
I understand. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion or additional questions on Article 11? Okay, hearing none. All those who are opposed to Article 11, please hold up your ticket. Zero, was that, was that the fire department that was arguing with you?
Yeah, they're opposed to everything.
The fire department is opposed to everything. They're opposed when we try to adjourn. Zero, zero, one. Okay, all those who are in favor of Article 11. Alright, there having been one no vote and a number of yes votes, Article 11 is adopted by the majority. Article 12, again, we will come to at the end. Article 13, a requirement of filing special legislation. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 13. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion on Article 13? Hearing and seeing none. All those who are opposed to Article 13, please raise your ticket. Okay, all those who are in favor of Article 13. Okay, there having been one no, and clearly more than a dozen yes, Article 13 is adopted by the majority. Article 14, the establishment of a committee to review the town's bylaws and procedures relating to town meetings. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 14. Are there any questions or discussion on Article 14?
Adolfus Neckwitz, 32 County Road. I don't understand what you're going to be reviewing as far as the bylaws. Are you going to pick out ones that are able to throw away in disregard? Who's going to be making that decision?
So this committee, in our bylaws, I think there are, I think there are 30-something articles in the bylaws. The second article, which consists of maybe 20 sections, is just about town meeting. That committee would make recommendations. It would come back to a town meeting like this to vote on any changes. The committee itself would not be able to change anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any additional questions or discussion on this article?
So, Lucille Rosa, 9 West Cudworth Avenue. What I'm understanding then is that this article is specifically to form a committee?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 14? Hearing and seeing none. All those who are opposed to Article 14, please raise your tickets. Okay, all those who are in favor of Article 14. Alright, there having been no no votes and many yes votes, we will call Article 14 as adopted unanimously. Article 15, again, has been withdrawn. It will not be discussed or voted on today. Article 16 has been withdrawn. It will not be discussed or voted on today. Article 17 asks for authorization for the treasurer to execute a deed for land auctioned in 1965. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 17. Are there any questions or discussion on this article?
Adolfus Neckwitz, 32 County Road, East Freetown. What parcel of land would this be?
This is the parking lot of the Asona Inn.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 17? Hearing and seeing none. All, this again requires a two-thirds vote. All who are opposed to this, please raise your ticket. Okay, all those who are in favor, please raise your ticket. Alright, the nos having been zero, the yeses being many, Article 17 is adopted unanimously. Article 18, which regards protective bylaw change regarding large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic, installations in vegetative, vegetative buffers. Whew, that's a lot. Uh, this article has been withdrawn by the planning board. The planning board submitted it. They have withdrawn it. So this is another article that we will not discuss or vote on today. They did ask that we let you know that they held public hearings on this article, and it was their belief after doing so that this additional regulation would be better covered in their rules and regulations than in the town's bylaws. So they will not be asking for your decision on this today. Article 19 is to transfer to the Capital Stabilization Fund, and this article has been recommended in the amount of $891,598 to be transferred from free cash. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 19 in the recommended amount. Are there any questions or discussion on this article? Yeah, 891,598. Oh, I read it a second. No, not a second. That's alright.
Tina Sorrell, Gerard Avenue, 14 Gerard Avenue. Just to clarify, because it does say we'll vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money. This is no new money. This is money that's already given. Thank you.
That is correct. This is a transfer from free cash, which is money that we already have. We're just asking to put it in a different type of account. Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 19? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All those who are opposed to Article 19, please raise your tickets. Okay, all those who are in favor of Article 19, please raise your tickets. The nos having been two, the yeses being more than two, Article 19 has been adopted by the majority. Article 20 seeks a transfer to the stabilization fund, and is recommended in the amount of $364,475. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve this article in the recommended amount of $364,475. And we have one question to start off.
Adolfus Neckwitz, 32 County Road. Why are we moving money around from one account to the other? Is it harder to track? Harder to keep your eye on, or? I, I'm not understanding why there's transfers from here to there, from there to here.
Selectmen or accountant, who wants to take that one?
So several years ago, we established a capital stabilization fund, and that fund is to do all of our capital projects, like the police station, or any other things that are going to go on. The regular stabilization fund is just for things that we vote on at town meetings. So specific items that we vote on at town meetings. So there are two specific funds. It's harder to get them out of capital stabilization and regular stabilization, and we have better control. The town has better control over it.
The people of the town, or the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. Everything, everything that we have to do that comes down to money has got to be approved by town meeting.
Either stabilization accounts.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And, and I'm just going to clarify on, Lisa said it was harder for the money to come out, and that's true. It requires a majority vote to put the money in, but it requires a two-thirds vote to spend the money. It's a much higher threshold to spend it. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I, I just don't really, really...
Nope, sir, you got to tell us your name first.
Oh, sure. Charles Salmon. I live on Baker Street. I guess I'm, been to a few of these things, and I've been involved with things like this. I don't understand why we use the word raise and appropriate if we already have the money.
I'm going to turn that question over to Kim.
In this particular case, raise and appropriate means that it is coming from the tax levy. It's within the existing levy limit, but it is coming from taxation. That's why we're using raise and appropriate.
Okay, so you're not raising taxes to do it?
It, it is on, through the tax levy process, it's with... It, it, it is on, through the tax levy process, it's within the levy. So, yes, it, it is an impact to taxes.
Okay, so translating to me that it does, it does raise taxes?
It's, it, within the existing levy. So, it, it's what we're able to raise without going above the levy limit.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 20? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Uh, all those who are opposed to Article 20, please raise your tickets. Okay, all who are in favor of Article 20, please raise your tickets. Alright, there were five nos, and there are more than five yeses, so Article 20 has been adopted by the majority. Uh, we now go back to Article 12. That's the one that you had the special note on at the beginning. Uh, Article 12 is a transfer of land held in tax title to the Conservation Commission. We have a motion and second to approve. However, if you go back to the note, we actually can't approve that article today. That's okay, you, the motion that's printed on the sheet? Okay, the motion, uh, has been made as is printed on your handout, and that is to continue Article 12 to Wednesday, October 21st at 4:15 PM at the Asona Bandstand. Yes, sir?
Could I please know what parcel of land is on this?
Yes, uh, let me just flip back to it for a second. Uh, so the first listed parcel of land, this is a vacant lot in Asona Bay shores. That's map 102, Lot 115. The second parcel of land, uh, that says that it is east of Slab Ridge Road, is landlocked land out in the middle of what's now the State Forest. The State Forest, the State Department of Conservation and Recreation bought, uh, close to a thousand acres north of Chase Road. This is a piece of land that the town owns that's in the middle of that.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Oh, we have somebody else coming up.
I just, I just have a simple one. Uh, what's the benefit of doing this?
Uh, arguably, the, so this is land that the town has taken because somebody did not pay their taxes. Uh, the Conservation Commission, in this case, believes that it's not possible to build on either of these pieces of property, so they don't suspect the town would get a considerable amount of money if it was sold.
What if you just left it alone?
Uh, if you left it alone, it would be vacant land belonging to the town that could be used for any municipal purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Are there any additional questions or discussion on the article? Okay, hearing and seeing none. The motion again today is simply to continue this article to that later date and time uh, for the reason that it cannot be voted on today. All those who are opposed to continuing this article, please raise your tickets. All those who are in favor of continuing this article, please raise your tickets. Okay, the nos having been zero, and the yeses being quite a few, Article 12 will be continued to October 21st at 4:15 at the bandstand. No, just whoever shows up. Uh, the proper motion now would be to adjourn, I believe, because we've continued the one specific thing. So could I have a motion, please, to adjourn today's meeting? We have some enthusiastic motions to adjourn. All those who are in favor, please raise your tickets. All those who are opposed, please raise your tickets. The, we have one person driving out opposing adjourned. Other than that, we are all set. Thank you for coming today. Thank you for your patience. Please have a safe drive home.